Okay, we're live. Welcome to the Board of Education meeting. If I could ask everybody to please rise and we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, girls. Thank you. It's nice to see so many children here tonight. Thank you for joining us and all the parents. We're so happy to have you and welcome to our meeting. We are going to start off with public comment. No, no public comment this evening. And we'll kick it off with our student representative report. Let's welcome Jason and Sienna.
Good evening to the Board of Education. We would like to thank you for having us here tonight. February was a celestial month. Leading up to Valentine's Day, the Life Skills Class enjoyed their annual dance, celebrating this holiday with their peers. Also, there's a very celestial blood drive. Donors contributed over 34 pints of blood on February 26, which could save up to over one July's. As we begin May, there are many dates to be aware of. This National Light will be on March 5th, celebrating the rich traditions of numerous cultures. The Annual International Light is being held once again on March 5th from 6:30 to 8:30 PM in the Hyso Cafeteria. There will be a showcase of incredible food and desserts, as well as games and activities unique to their backgrounds. Additionally, there will be a career fair on March 12 from 8:30 to 10:15 AM. Many workers from various departments will be there to inform students and more information as well as a link to sign up will be available on the Locust Valley website.
Furthermore, in January, Inshall Abid and Abigail Moselli were named valedictorian and salutatorian of the class of 2025. Congratulations to these scholars for their extraordinary academic achievements. Lastly, continuing education course offerings are now open for enrollment for the spring. These include a variety of courses, included but not limited to volleyball, yoga, estates and trusts, and social security. Thank you to the Board for having us here tonight and we wish to keep this positive trajectory going forward. Thank you.
Thank you both so much. We will move on to our superintendent report with Dr. Turnow.
I'm going to be relatively quick this evening just because we've got some wonderful presentations. I just wanted to really report to the Board of Ed and the community that I just attended a superintendent's conference up in Albany. I left on Saturday, just got back a couple hours ago. It's a wonderful opportunity to be with all the superintendents in New York and really discuss new curriculum efforts that other districts are making, listen to speakers from all over the state, get to hear some of the new laws or legislation that they're thinking about, and really just being even with my colleagues, the other 123 superintendents on Long Island, and really just listening to what they're doing in their district. It's a wonderful way to network and all the vendors that work for the school districts, whether it's facilities or textbooks, anything you can think of, bus companies, they're all there also for us to have conversations with, which is really nice. Today, LVI, I can see some of the principals here, many of the administrators, Dr. Farina and Mr. Packard, Dr. Sampino and myself. We got to listen to amazing children talk about their science projects. And what really stood out for me is how well our students are able to articulate the purpose of their study and really explain step by step what they did with such confidence. And you know, Mr. DeRose and five of our upperclassmen were the judges and they were walking around. I'm sure you'll get to see the pictures too because Mr. Carazza was there taking some photos of our students. But it's always proud to see all the efforts that our students produce, really what they work hard at in their classrooms. And then lastly, I just wanted to put in a plug for Monday, March 10th at 6:00 PM at LVI. It's an unplugged night, so we're really hoping to see a lot of our families there. Just a little quick reminder. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'd now like to welcome Anne Marie Bonaspena, who is going to present our All County and LASFA Music Student Recognition. Thank you.
Dr. Turnow, Dr. Sampino, Mrs. Horajewski, Mrs. Themis, and the members of Board of Education. This evening, I am here to celebrate the talented student musicians who have been accepted into the 2025 NASA Music Educators Association, All County, and LISPA, which stands for Long Island String Festival Association Music Festivals. Music is a fundamental part of our culture and it brings people together in ways that nothing else can. It enriches our lives, feeds our souls, and teaches us valuable life skills such as discipline, teamwork, and creativity. By participating in these festivals, our students have demonstrated their commitment to excellence in music and they have earned the opportunity to perform with the best young musicians in the county. Student nominations are based on their NISMAS scores and teacher recommendations and we are extremely unfortunate to have such a talented group of students in our schools. And I want to thank our music teachers for their hard work and dedication in guiding them to reach their full potential. The passion and commitment of our music teachers, combined with the hard work and dedication of our students, have resulted in this achievement of 46 Locust Valley students being accepted in both the NMEA and LISPA festivals. So we're going to start with our Division One All County East Festival from Beaville Intermediate and Locust Valley Intermediate. As I call your names, students, please come up to get a certificate and then we're going to take a picture at the end. So starting with Alexa Velez. Anna Maria Argelin. Lucia Mandel. Natalie Martinovich. Alexis Del Giudice. Olivia Shen. Ariana Thorp. Michaela Stanko. Gracie Thompson. Ashley Grassi. Henrik Baron. Caramia Santa Maria. Kaia Dean. Jade Adwar. Caroline Principay. And Raymond Martinez. Let's give a warm round of applause to our Division One All County Student Musician Representative. And now for our Division Two Musicians from Locust Valley Middle School. Starting it off with Waverly Shinoy. Elouise Spurcees. Lilian Zatverneke. And Charlotte Burton. Moving on to our Division Three, also from Locust Valley Middle School, Alisa Tan. Tristan Amparo. Penelope Novak. Lila Frazier. And Ellis Cosgrove. Another round of applause for our Division Two and Division Three Musicians. Now from Locust Valley High School, Division Four, Harry Frazier. Stella Frazier. Gianna Moriana. John Zatverneke. Max Bamba. And Sophia Wild. And of course, our Division Five Student Musicians, Grace Arouse. Sarah Paulus. Justin Quack. Lucy Nixon. Andrew Weeman. Abigail Wong. And last but not least, Jack French. Congratulations again to our All County High School Division Four and Division Five Student Musicians. Next, we will now celebrate our Long Island String Festival Association, or LISPA, students for their participation in the LISPA Intermediate and Secondary Festivals, with actually the Intermediate Festival being this past weekend. So we'll start off with Anna Maria Argelin. Caramia Santa Maria. Olivia Shen. Maeve Geiger. Waverly Shinoy. Alisa Tan. And from our Secondary Festival, Angelina Iodice. And Evan Raffey. Congratulations to all of our All County and LISPA Student Musicians.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bonaspena. We are always so impressed by the musical talents in this district and I hope this is only the first of many awards and exciting events as you grow through your musical career here in the district. Congratulations once again to everybody. We are going to move on to a curriculum budget presentation. If I could ask Dr. Janine Sampino to join us, please? Thank you. If any of the students have to go home, I know you have homework and things. It's okay to leave. We're not insulted, don't worry. Have a great night, everybody.
I know how to clear a room. Well, thank you, Dr. Turnow and the Board of Education. I just love seeing the kids. It's amazing. And I just want to say, this has been some day and I just want to start by saying thank you to Mrs. Bonaspena. She led a wonderful secondary staff development today. Thank you, special thank you to Mrs. McBride over at LVI for inviting us to the Science Fair. Of course, Mrs. Riley, Dr. Farina, Mr. Packard, Mr. DeRose and the students and the wonderful parents I spoke with there. I can't wait for BI's. I think March 13th, am I right? March 13th is BI's? So I also heard from Mr. Aneah because I see Mrs. Gaglioni back there. I heard that 18 students participated in the Model UN at Hofstra this past weekend and how proud Mrs. Gaglioni is of all of her students and one earned Best Delegate and four received Honorable Mentions. So I wanted to definitely give a shout out to Mrs. Gags back there. I also want to wish safe travels and good luck to our 11 students who are traveling to Rochester to compete in the Business DECA Competition. Mrs. Olaka, good luck. You've been wonderful. And Mr. Aneah are traveling with them, so I just wanted to give a shout out to them and we wish for them the best. So lots going on here in Locust Valley. So when we think of budget, we think of planning. And in the fall, the Board of Education had shared with them their goals. And two that we really, the Curriculum Office that we really looked at is continuously improving overall academic achievement and strengthening a student-centered, whole-child approach, which I couldn't agree more. So when we plan and one of the first bullets, we talk about deep learning and sustainability. We're talking about what do we look at that the district needs in terms of instruction and how do we sustain that? We prioritize instructional practices. We want to foster critical thinking, creativity, lifelong learning. We also want to ensure that these initiatives, we can sustain them and that's really important when we talk about budgeting. We also look at student outcomes. I want to thank the amazing instructional leaders I have behind me, our building principals, our coordinators, our Director of Guidance. These people work with me when we look at all student data. We look at the NWA, the New York State Assessments, the Regions, the AP, the IB, to help us guide and enhance the educational experience for all students. Hiring and retaining personnel. I want to take a special moment to thank Mrs. Villa for the Board to hire an Executive Director of Human Resources. This has been so important as we work on procedures for hiring our staff and retaining our staff, making sure they have the proper professional development and making sure all of those i's are dotted and t's are crossed and Mrs. Villa does it beautifully. So we really want to strengthen our recruitment. We've reached out to colleges. We want to make sure that we give them the proper professional development and we try to offer targeted growth opportunities. And strengthening student-centered, whole-child approach with community connections. We believe in partnerships with our parents and our teachers and our students. So building strong partnership with the families, having unplugged nights, bringing in someone. We're just, I will be talking about Leader and Me. How do we have parent outreach and someone from the Leader and Me do a parent workshop for our parents, which will be happening? So curriculum development and alignment, this is a really big part of the Curriculum Office. We look at summer proposals for new curriculum projects and we have summer proposals, everything from strengthening our physical education and health to looking at vocational things, opportunities for our life skills, to unfunded and state standards like mandates that are really the state puts down on us. Like we have new standards in mathematics and science. So these are really important and we have to write curriculum to keep up to date with that. And we're going to be focusing on elementary social studies, Mr. Aneah, and we have a summer curriculum project to align some content and thematic social studies, tie it into ELA, as well as elementary science investigations. And with that, we are, the Board has agreed to add a three through five intermediate science teacher, which is going to be really great to really focus on all the science investigations in the district. So we're really proud about that. Okay, professional development. You've heard of talk about professional development before and how important it is for us to come together as a staff and to really look about instructional practices and include workshop, coaching, and collaborative planning. So we continue with our new teacher orientation program, our Superintendent's Conference Days. We have mentoring programs. We have after-school professional development, which is part of our teacher's contract. Our teachers have mandated professional development hours. We have new programs like Leader and Me or when we were in the middle of implementing our new readings program at the elementary level. We look at student data to drive instruction. We're aligning assessments. And next year, we're really going to try to focus, bring up some best practices in reading and focus at the middle school and really kind of hone in over there to kind of, we're going to have the same trainer kind of work with our middle school staff. Instructional technology. We're ensuring access to instructional technology. It's all about balance. We really tried to maintain a balance at the elementary school. We've listened to the Board of Education where we have CARTs and the kids are not bringing their Chromebooks home every day. But we also know that that's a platform where the students are taking assessments. Up into high school, now they're taking the SAT on the Chromebook. So there's a balance. We are continuing with Parent Square. We apologize for the delay. It's actually coming, I think, this week. Mrs. Bonaspena, this week, tomorrow. Parent Square, what happened is we were making sure the data that goes into it is good data. So the information, a product is only as good as the information that's in it. So they were working on making sure that's great. We're maintaining our Chromebook device purchases for one-to-one, K through 12. We're continuing with our Promethean boards and we're maintaining existing software and subscriptions and we're also looking at some AI products for our staff so that our staff can learn what's coming up in the world with artificial intelligence. So we have some proposed new courses at the high school. We have a new English elective called College Composition and I believe this is going to be offered for dual enrollment credit. We have a new course in social studies, Advanced International Relations, Model UN, excuse me. We're offering AP Human Geography as an elective for grades 10 through 12. And the last couple, Comprehensive Music Theory and Keyboarding, Exploring Theater from Stage to Song, Studio and Decorative Applied Arts and Visual Storytelling and Theater Set and Prop Design, and Advanced Drawing and Painting. Mrs. Bonaspena did like a rebrand of her classes and we really looked at enrollment and how do we get more kids involved and how do we maybe combine some things so that we have some fuller classes? So what are our commitments? We're going to continue to align our practices to the science of reading. We're going to continue to look at our elementary program and strengthen it. We're going to strengthen foundational literacy skills. We're training our teachers on real foundational literacy skills. Cultivating mathematics, developing critical thinking. This is our second year of the Go Math program. Next year, Dr. Farina and I will look at it again as we have to then sign a new contract. Writing across disciplines. This is really important as we continue in elementary. As I said before, we're going to move up to the middle school. We added a new course in the high school. So we're really trying to encourage writing across all disciplines. And again, not just using the Chromebook. Cultivating science and engineers. Inspiring inquiry, innovation, hands-on learning. I know Dr. Turnow has reached out to Mr. DeRose to find out what do our research kids need? How do we get more kids in that program? And building leadership amongst our students. You know, it's really important when, again, when we plan, when we look at things, we really are going to be, you know, focusing on what can we do to open up more doors for students? What can we do at the elementary school to open, to prepare them for the middle school? What can we do at the middle school level so that they're prepared for the high school? What things can we do in eighth grade so that they could get as many credits as possible so they could take more electives and we can open up more doors? So we're really looking at those kind of and having those conversations with the wonderful people behind me and with Dr. Turnow and the Board of Education. I did also want to mention, which I forgot, what was also wonderful this year in terms of our planning is we're actually able to offer an additional pre-case section for next school year. And again, I think that's wonderful. I know there was a lot of parents really happy with that and we're really trying to, again, based on our enrollment, kind of shift some resources to really maximize the experience for our students. So I just wanted to give a little slide at Leader and Me. Dr. Turnow, feel free to jump in because I know this is one of your, you know, your favorite things and we've been really fortunate enough to attend the trainings. Really, it's, Dr. Turnow had kind of shared that she had spoken to some superintendents. We had visited some districts. And it's really about leadership and life skills and building that not amongst us all, our staff, our teachers, and our students. And it's based on Franklin Covey's Seven Habits of Effective People. Being proactive, beginning with the end of mind, having a plan, putting first things first, prioritizing things, think win-win, seek first to understand, then to be understood, like listen before you talk and I think that's a great lesson. Synergize, you know, doing things together and this teamwork is better. And sharpen the saw, balance feels best. Like, you know, how do we balance all the things? All the sports and the work commitments? How do we balance family and work? So these are really wonderful principles and I'm just going to give you a little timeline of what we've done thus far. So we began with our administrators over the summer. We met in two days in August and we really kind of dove deep into the seven habits. We then decided it would be really wonderful if we can offer the seven habits during Superintendent's Conference Day. So that was one of our sessions. We had like a morning and afternoon session. And it was really intense because we also had busing because it was the day of the election day and we had all our teachers, we had many moving parts and our staff was amazing. We then did a district alignment day. We basically looked at everything we're offering in social, emotional learning and we say, how does this fit in? Because what we were hoping was this would be like something that would help us have a common language and a common vision. The primary buildings, we began, since we had such a wonderful like kind of feedback, we began in the primary buildings and I will tell you, thank you so much to Mr. Cohen and Mr. Simon. They were so open. They opened their doors. Their staff was amazing. We had training, we have a wonderful trainer named Gary McGuee, which creates consistency and we really had wonderful days of focusing on those seven habits. From that, there's a smaller team at each building. They call it the Lighthouse Team and they focus on three things, leadership, academics, and culture. And it's everything from what should be like hanging in the hallways to how do we develop student portfolios? I mean, really cool things. And now we're up to coaching days. So they will have follow-up plans where we plan, we plan student portfolios, common language, mission statements, you know, for our students. You know, instead of having class rules, it's like, what's our mission? Our mission is, you know, what are we meant to do? So it's been a lot of fun. I've been learning a lot. I love sitting with the teachers. I get to know them and I think they get to know me and Dr. Turnow has been there. Mrs. Themis has been there, you know, stopped by. It's really been a wonderful moment where we all come together. So with that, that's it. We have a lot going on here. Again, I want to thank our incredible team. And does anybody have any questions?
I want to add one thing, Dr. Sampino.
You can, I could.
Of course. So I think the greatest joy that even for us to sit back and to watch is the excitement of the teachers. The excitement of the teachers and they're getting very competitive even between the buildings.
Yes. They like shirts.
Yes, they are really into it, which is really amazing. But there was something that really resonated with me. One of our teachers, I won't name him to be polite, but he went to Saichem School District and he was taught all these seven habits. And he is part of the Lighthouse Team. And he is part of the Lighthouse Team, but he remembers everything. And that really shows you, you know, he's a grown man now, he's one of our educators, but how he felt as a student in that school district and what he feels of the seven habits. And it was, it was so nice that he shared that even with us, his experience. And that really just goes to show you, you know, when you're looking at Stephen Covey's work, you know, Fortune 500, that's what we want our students to leave with. These are skill sets that they're going to take forever with them. And it's so nice to see that one of our educators, you know, is really championing this, and we didn't even know it. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else have any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Sampino, and I was...
Aw. Thank you so much. I really do, I also, I really, really want to thank our teachers because I will tell you, we've thrown a lot at them this year, especially at elementary, they've been doing reading, writing, grammar. Now we threw in Leader and Me, and they still smile when they see me, so that says a lot, and I really appreciate it. And again, thank you to our wonderful team. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you again. And I'm thrilled to see the science program coming into the intermediate buildings. I know that's a topic that the parents and the administration and the board has discussed over curriculum meetings for quite some time, and it's wonderful to see it come to fruition. We are going to move on to our numbers extraordinaire, Karen Horstewski, who will give us the budget presentation three this evening.
Hello. Tonight, we're going to be reviewing budget presentation number three. So that's going to include our tax cap, the tax reserve, curriculum and instruction codes, student activities, and special education budget codes. On tonight's agenda, we're going to review the current year's budget. We're going to understand the tax cap, what it is and how it's calculated, our fund balance, our instructional budget codes, or the 2000 codes, and the 25-26 budget calendar and timeline. I want to start off here by apologizing in advance. You've heard me review the current year's budget, but I think it's really important that we, that you understand our starting point. So if we look at the overview of the 24-25 expenditure budget, we have a budget of $96.4 million. That was a 2.65 increase budget to budget. If you look at the pie chart right there, you'll see that our salaries and benefits, they're just about 75% of our budget. And then if you look at the revenue side, our revenue, our tax levy was $88 million. Of that, 90, sorry, that was an increase of 1.96%. Of the $96.4 million budget, 88 million, or 96.36, 91.36% of the district's funding comes from the taxpayers. This is a quick snapshot of our enrollment. So what is the tax cap? So back in 2011, the property tax cap formula was signed into law, and that was to limit the annual growth of property taxes for local governments and school districts to 2% or the rate inflation, whichever is lower. There are several components of our tax cap calculation. We start with the prior year tax levy. The next is the tax base growth factor. That's provided to us by New York State, and that, and that, as of this year, it's And that measures the changes in real property values within the district. The next is pilots, those are payment in lieu of taxes. We have our Consumer Price Index, that's CPI, or 2%, whichever is lower. And finally, part of the tax cap calculation has exclusions. For us, for Locust Valley, that includes capital, our debt service, if we chose to have a, if we were buying a bus, BOSI, and BOSI's capital expenditures. This is a look at our tax, at the tax cap calculation. I'm going to quickly go through it, but step one, we're going to calculate our adjusted prior year tax levy. We take the prior year tax levy, we multiply it by the tax base growth factor, we're going to add our prior year pilots and subtract the prior, the prior year exclusions. Step two, we're going to calculate the tax levy limit before exclusions. So we're going to start with the prior year tax levy, we're going to multiply the CPI increase, or 2%, whichever is lower. And then we're going to move to step three, which calculates the current year tax levy maximum. We're going to take the tax levy limit before the exclusions, we're going to subtract out the current year pilots, we're going to add the current year exclusions, which was debt and capital, and then we're going to come up to our current year tax levy. So here's the final calculation for the district's maximum tax levy. We are starting out with 88 million, 88 million and 81,500, 852. We're multiplying it by our tax base growth factor, we're adding our pilots and subtracting our prior year exclusions. We're going to multiply it by 2%, the lower of CPI, or 2%. And then we're going to subtract out the pilots and the current year exclusions. So that, the current year tax levy maximum for the 25-26 year is 90,462,348. That is a maximum tax levy increase of 2.7%. I added this chart because this is the tax cap maximums for our neighboring districts. To put this all in perspective, this is where we fall with our neighboring districts. You could see the range is between 2.7 and 3.5%, and you can see that we fall in the middle with 2.7%. This is a historic comparison for Locust Valley, the tax levy cap versus our actual levy. Just because we can go to the levy, you can see that we try not to do so. With that said, there may be some years which we may have to in order to run, to run some of our programs, but our Board of Education is very thoughtful over the impact it has to the homeowners within the district. Fund balance and reserve. So what is fund balance? Fund balance is an accumulation of X of revenue over expenditures in a given fund. It serves as a measure of our financial health and flexibility. It is classified into four categories. Unspendable, which includes our prepaid expenses. Restricted, they are reserves that are set up for a specific purpose. Our assigned, this comes from our prior year's encumbrances. And finally, we have the unassigned. This is sometimes called the rainy day fund. It is capped at 4% of the following year's budget, and despite recent media attention, Locust Valley has consistently adhered to the legal limit of 4%. So this is our reserve balance as of June 30, 2024. I want to highlight that of June 2024, our balance stood at $25.6 million. It's a healthy, but it's not an excessive amount. As I stated earlier, our unassigned fund balance remains at 4%, fully compliant with New York State law. And finally, please note the balance of our district's capital reserve at $10.771,692. So proposed capital improvement projects. You may have noticed some of the renderings outside our auditorium. These renderings are part of a proposed capital improvement plan that will be funded through our capital reserve. This will have no tax levy impact to the taxpayers. This is an account that we have, as I said before, it's a reserve account, it's a savings account. This is what we were planned to use it for as a capital reserve. This will be Proposition 2 on the ballot. So this is the very exciting part of my budget, of the school's budget, I apologize for that. School budget codes follow a uniform system of accounts, which govern, account codes used in New York State's school districts. Tonight's presentation will focus on our instructional budget codes, specifically the 2000 codes. Curriculum development and supervision. So this, so you will see the curriculum, we're going to start with curriculum development and supervision. If you see the percent change, it's the first bold category, you'll see there is a decrease in 15.26%. So this code includes our, the code for the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and our coordinators. You may remember, in my February presentation, I mentioned a new administrative human resource position that was not an added FTE, rather, it was a reclassification from an instruction, an instructional code. This is the code. In this, in addition, we had a .5 FTE Administrator of Operations and Technology position that was also .5% taken out of this code and put into the non-instructional code. This code reflects, so the very first line, which is instructional salaries, this code reflects the reclassification of the 1.5 administrative FTEs plus estimated contractual increases. So I just want to stop for a moment because there are a number of notes on this slide. The two notes were, that you'll see is estimated contractual increases and contractual increases. Whenever I refer to an estimated contractual increase, those are bargaining units that we are currently bargaining, we're currently going into negotiations for. So that's why I just refer to it as estimated. So the next line, which is our non-instructional salaries, you'll see there is an increase, and this is due to estimated contractual salary increases. Number three, which is materials and supplies, again, this falls under curriculum development and supervision, and this increase is due to additional professional development for the supplies and the materials. Next is supervision. This code reflects our principals and the principal's office. So if you read under the instructional salaries, this increase is due to estimated contractual salary increase, which is also offset by stipend reduction. I'm going to backtrack for one moment, I apologize. Under the supervision, you will notice that the code itself, there is an increase of 3.264 for the entire code. So to go back, so on the instructional salaries, that's the A2020.15, there is an increase of 1.8%. This is an increase due to estimated contractual salaries that was offset by, sorry, by stipend reductions. The next line, which is our non-instructional salaries, that is our clerical salaries, that is an increase due to estimated contractual salaries increase. Number three, which is our contracts, the 2020.4, that's contracts, that's an increase due to additional professional development. And finally, on the bottom, we have 2020.49, which is our BOSI services. That reflects an increase for rising costs related to our e-school and other parent Supervision, curriculum development, and in-service training. Supervision, that's special education and pupil services. You'll see an increase of 38.282. So on the very first line, that's A2040.15, that's instructional salaries. That's an increase of an additional FTE for a special education school supervision. Number two, the non-instructional salaries, that's an increase, this is a clerical code, this is an increase due to a clerical promotion and estimated contractual salary increases. Under the curriculum development, you will see an increase of 20% for the code, and that's an increase for additional curriculum writing to support our instructional development and alignment. And then the last, the last line is our in-service training. Under the instructional salaries, that's number four, that's an increase of additional mandated contractual after-school staff development. And the last item, which is A207049, that is an increase for new instructional programs, which includes the Leader and Me. So this is general instruction. For the, for a total, it has its own slide. The total is an increase from the previous year of 1.086%. We start off with the teacher salaries elementary. This reflects a decrease due to retired teachers not being replaced, plus some salaries being paid for through the grant, which is then offset by our contractual salary increases. The next line, teacher salaries, seven through 12. This is an increase due to contractual salary increases, which is offset by a, by two FTEs. And just a side note, an FTE is full-time equivalent. Then we move to our non-instructional salaries. So that also includes our, some clerical, but also some of our SRPs. So that is an increase due to a reclass FTE from, from a non-instructional salary code, A1430, and estimated contractual salary increases. Under A2110.4, that's contractual and other, there is a decrease based on distinct, sorry, based on district shifting cost for assessments. On A2110.45, materials and supplies, there's a decrease due to decrease in requests. The next one under, which is textbooks, A2110.48, there is a decrease due to lower textbooks expenditures in this off-year cycle. And finally, A2110.490, other BOSI services, this is an increase due to instructional technology reclassification. We now move over to, we now to special education. We now move over to special education. The first line, which is instructional salaries, A2250.5, you'll see there is a percentage change of .761. This is an increase due to contractual salary increases, offset by a reduction of one FTE. Non-instructional salaries, so that includes some of our SRPs and also our OT. So this decrease is due to outsourcing one OT, which is also offset by some contractual salary increases. Finally, on the last three lines, you'll notice it is tuition paid to public districts, tuition all others, and BOSI services. These are changes based on anticipated enrollments of out-of-district placements. So in total, the special education line is a decrease of .753%. The next line is our occupational education. So that's our oc-ed. This is where our students go to BOSIs. You'll see there's an increase due to the number of students attending this program, which is billed on a three-year average. The next line, which is continuing ed, there is a $5,000 increase, and that's just due to expenses, current year's expenses. Under the school library, under instructional salaries, that is A2610.15, there is a decrease due to a reduction of two FTEs, offset by contractual salary increases. And finally, under A2610.46, school library AV program, there is a decrease due to aligning expenses with New York State aid reimbursements. So that code, the school library code, is a decrease of 18.71%. We now move to the educational TV. You'll see that is going to be an increase of 4.9%. So under instructional salaries, there's an increase due to contractual salary increases. Under 2620.45, materials and supplies, there's an increase due to program requests. Next is computer assistant instruction. The overall change is 10.633%. Under the first line, which is instructional salaries, this is an increase due to contractual salary increases. The second line, which is non-instructional salaries, you'll see there's a number three, and I'm also going to bring you down, 1, 2, 3, 4, to BOSI services. So the non-instructional salaries is an increase of an FTE, and that's offsetting our BOSIs' costs. That's because we had a BOSI employee working in the district, and we brought him on as an employee. Our next is our materials and supplies. You will see that there is an increase, and that is due to replacement of Chromebooks for two grades. We move to attendance. You'll see attendance has a decrease of 11.556%. Under the non-instructional salaries, you'll see there is a decrease due to eliminating an hourly seasonal position, which is offset by estimated contractual salary increases. The next is our guidance code. That is an increase of 6.6%. On the first line, which is instructional salaries, that's A2810.15, that's an increase due to contractual salary increases. Under the non-instructional salaries, that's the code right below that, there is an increase, and that's due to reclassification of a part-time clerical from A2110, and it also includes estimated contract salary increases. And finally, under health services, the first line, which again, it's instructional salaries, that's our nurses code. That increase is due to estimated contractual salary increases, and that is a 3.25% increase totaled for health services. Next is psychological services. The first line, which is instructional salaries, that's A2820. We will see a decrease. The decrease is due to one less FTE and salaries paid for through a grant, which is also offset by contractual salary increases. I'm going to skip social workers because there wasn't much of a change. And then move down to co-curricular activities. There is a change of a negative .299. Under the first line, which is instructional salaries, that's A2850.15, that's an increase based on actual expenditures for various stipends. And on the line below that, which is contractual and other, you will see that this is a decrease due to reallocating some expenditures to BOSIs. And finally, the final line on the 2,000 code is our interscholastic athletics. That is an overall increase of 3.091. The second line, which is non-instructional salaries, you will see that there's an increase, and this was due to a clerical promotion and estimated contractual salary increases. Two lines down, which is contractual and other, that's an increase for AED replacement maintenance and then annual recertification. The one right underneath that, materials and supplies, it's an increase due to request for replacement materials. And finally, under BOSI services, there's an increase due to an added program. So this is the summary of the district's non-instructional presentation, which was done in February, and tonight's presentation. The percentage change for these, from the 1,000 codes all the way to the 2,999 codes, is a percentage change at this point of 1.5% budget to budget. Our next steps. So in March 26, 2025, we're going to review transportation expenditures, benefits, capital projects, and start with the draft budget summary. And these are the remaining meetings on the calendar. And that's it.
Thank you, Karen, for your wonderful presentation. You've really helped to bring us through and elevate these budget presentations over the past year, so we do appreciate it. Thank you so much. Our next order of business is our board reports. We'll go through our committees, starting with the audit committee. Unfortunately, Mr. Barnes is unable to be with us tonight. He did have a death in the family, so we do send him our condolences and our thoughts tonight. For our budget and finance committee?
No report.
The curriculum committee?
Yes, thanks, Lauren. We met with Dr. Sampaio yesterday, Lauren Themis and I, as well as our curriculum coordinators. We had a terrific meeting. Dr. Sampaio ran through a lot of what was discussed tonight. We also discussed the need for potentially developing some new rhythms next year, where we explore new procedures, notably around the curriculum coordinators, Dr. Sampaio and the board, working a little bit more closely earlier on to better understand the rationale for either adding new courses, making suggestions to maybe drop a class, or even rebrand or consolidate a class. So we will explore doing that next year, which we're excited about. The only other thing I will say again is just, it's an expression of my gratitude to all of you and to you, Dr. Sampaio. Clearly, it takes a lot of work to do everything that you are so clearly invested in, and I'm just excited to be a part of that, and every time I get in a room with you people, I'm just deeply humbled. One thing Dr. Sampaio mentioned that I just want to take a second to just pause on was when you talked about the desire to really try to get those pencils, those pens back in hand and get these students writing again. I am a communicator, like, that's what I do. I work in corporate America. I write for executives. I write presentations. I write executive talking points. I develop strategic communications plans. And I never, ever write anything down on paper. I communicate through Microsoft Teams all day long, or Skype. I send emails. I rarely write, but I don't think I would be the communicator that I am today unless I had done all of that writing and reading when I was a kid. I think we are living in an age of just instant gratification. Learning comes easier, things are quicker. We are digesting news in sort of 30-second bursts. You're not getting the full story, and this is how we're getting a lot of our information now. And I do think that investment of time and delaying that gratification in writing with longhand and reading really helps build those critical thinking skills and that deeply analytical mind that these students are going to need to navigate this world of AI and to be more discerning. So I just want to thank you all in advance for really continuing. I've seen growth in that space over the past couple of years, and I'm really impressed by it, and I'm excited to see more of it, with these students really reading a book and writing on paper. So thank you in advance for that. It means a lot. And that's it.
Thank you, Holly, for your words and for leading a beautiful committee meeting yesterday. We are going to move on to, where am I at here? Facilities committee.
Good evening. We had a facilities meeting earlier this evening. We also had a great meeting yesterday with the CPC to go over the couple of major capital projects. The one major update, and I'll start the shameless plugging from now, is that very important bullet that Karen had that was in tire caps. These projects have no bearing on our tax levy. This is money we have set aside, that we've saved in order to be able to do these types of major capital improvements to our already beautiful campus. So please take your time, take a look at the boards that we'll be having at all of our school buildings, showing some graphics, showing some images. They're still being changed and worked on, but I'm confident with the community's support that cafeteria and the library here will be things that our entire community will be proud of and that they'll be staples for Long Island to actually come and visit and to see. So thank you very much.
Thank you, George. Moving on to policy committee?
Policy had a pre-meeting yesterday with administrators and Holly. They went through the code of conduct. Once again, we're kind of at the final stages. We've been working on this for probably almost a year or so. The next step is a formal meeting next week with the administrators and the legal team to go through wording. There's also going to be a forthcoming survey to the community, kind of what's important to you in the code of conduct assessment. And then there'll be future engagement with the stakeholders with the code of conduct, new code of conduct or updated code of conduct is. So there's a process that we have to follow, and that's it.
Thank you, Margaret. For the PR and communications, no report, but I do want to thank Tom Caroza for getting all those gray boards out front tonight. The visuals are always really helpful for the community, and we will be coming out with some email documents that'll kind of outline the projects, and those will be forthcoming and also distributed throughout our parent groups over the next few weeks. So thank you, Tom. Our technology committee?
Yeah, so I will be leading the technology committee going forward. I was able to briefly catch up with Anne-Marie to try and get downloaded on what was going on, but as everyone knows, one of the biggest things that's taking place for technology-wise is we're going to be moving to Parent Square imminently, so that's a big update, but there will be more to come shortly.
Thank you, Nick. Are there any other reports from board trustees this evening? Thank you all. We do not have any unfinished business. There is no items for new business. And we'll move over to our consent agenda. Are there any questions regarding the consent agenda? Okay, can I have a motion? Margaret, second. George, all in favor? It's unanimous. Hey, Anne-Marie, did you want to speak? There's a donation on our consent agenda for Once Upon a Mattress. I didn't know if you wanted to mention anything about it. Thank you.
Yes, so we have a community member and our set designer, Nicole Stegelbauer. And she also works for SNL, and SNL just had their 50th anniversary, and there were a tremendous amount of items that she built for SNL that they were just going to discard of. So she donated them to our school to replace some broken items, student-made items. Now we have high quality. Honestly, just go right behind, you can already see some of the items that have been donated. But yeah, we'll have a big delivery of some more stuff coming in this week for Once Upon a Mattress, which is in a few weeks.
Thank you so much, and thank you to our community member for their generosity. At this time, we will be going into exec. If I can have a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss legal matters? Margaret, seconded by Holly, all in favor? It's unanimous. I hope everyone has a safe home and a wonderful rest of the week. Thank you.